You're not on here as a member or an alternate member. You're still welcome to go to the meetings. You don't officially participate because you're not on the committee, but you're, you know, anyone is, you know, can attend. And if you're an alternate member and you're sitting in for one of the primary member or primary members, if there's more than one, then you can participate in the meeting. And some of these you'll see are for the fiscal year. Well, that's the Finance and Budget and the Governance Committees. So we'll be making new appointments for those committees come June for the month of July. All right, all in favor of the motion to approve the appointments that committees has attached to the agenda, please say aye.
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 Aye, all opposed. Motion passes unanimously. 3.05, Adoption of 2022 Administrative Authorizations. These include the authorization of the superintendent's designees to attend school board meetings in the absence of the superintendent, the authorization of the superintendent to assign and transfer teachers' principals and assistant principals in accordance with Section 22.1-297 of the Code of Virginia, and Stafford County Public School Policy 4109 and Regulation 4109R, authorization of the superintendent or designated representatives to issue signed employment contracts and accept resignations, the authorization of the superintendent or designated representatives to examine all claims, approve payments, and appoint certain deputy agents in accordance with Section 22.1-122 of the Code of Virginia, and authorization for payment of shorty bonds for the agent and deputy clerks. And, let's see, good heavens, there's a lot of these. Authorization of petty cash funds and payment of claims from petty cash in accordance with Section 22.1-123 of the Code of Virginia. I get them all? There's five? Five of these authorizations?
The question to approve 3.05, adoption of 2022 administrative authorization.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Motion by Dr. Chase, second by Ms. Randall. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Then we have the final item from the Section 3 is the adoption of the 2022 school board meeting schedule. Do we have a motion?
Ms. Healy, given that we have an item on the agenda for information about changing the schedule, I was wondering if we should defer this?
Well, if we defer it, then we won't have any meeting two weeks from tonight. So, I mean, we could defer it if it's a pleasure, Board. My suggestion would be we adopt a schedule recognizing that we're going to have a discussion, and that discussion, you know, will most likely, no decision's going to be made, you know, tonight. So if we approve this, it's subject to change, just like any decision that we make.
Yeah, that's just, it's kind of, it's going to change apparently likely in the future. So I wasn't sure if we wanted to adopt it as is, but I have no objection.
At a minimum, we have to approve the next meeting. So, it's a pleasure of the Board. Let's have a motion first. I'm trying to follow the rules.
Adoption of the 2022 school board meeting schedule.
I will second it.
Okay. All right, so any discussion? Do we, any objection to adopting this with the understanding that we can change it if we decide, you know, as a Board that we want to change that schedule?
I don't have a problem with, you know, understanding that we need to maybe come together with other dates. I obviously want to have our next meeting, but if we need to come together to discuss, move, or change, we can do that, even at a retreat if we need to.
So for sure, we will have the meeting on January 25th at 7:00, unless some other thing comes up ahead of that. Okay, all right, so we have a motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion to approve this agenda attached to the calendar attached to the agenda item, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. All right, so we will maybe put a note on that, Ms. Hall, when that's published, the Board intends to have a discussion about that, and, you know, it's course subject to change. Thank you.
Madam Chair, before we approve the agenda, I'd like to make one change, please.
Can we do that in the form of a motion?
Yes. Madam Chair, I'd like to move to approve the agenda with one change, and that is to defer item 1103 to a future meeting, undetermined at this time.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Any discussion?
That'll come from me, certainly. So you're talking about 1103, which is the removal of the mask requirement for non-school buildings. So I think at this point, we, as a Board, need to determine and be very clear that there has to be a stopping point. Like, we have to sit and look at what is happening. I think we need more information from the Health Department. There are several questions that need to be answered on behalf of them. There is several bits of information that are missing from what they're presenting to the public, and I'd like to have them come and answer those questions for us and justify the continued use if that's going to be how they're going to move forward. But I think it behooves this Board, the community deserves it, the county deserves it, we have to start recovery here, and I think we need questions answered for them. And we need the tough questions answered, not the easy ones anymore, because the easy ones have already been answered. So I will not oppose this, but I would like the next meeting for the Health Department to be here with some answers for these people. They've earned it.
I just think it's important for us to realize that the Health Department does not work for the school board, and therefore, we can't require them to come before this Board. However, perhaps they will with an invitation. Otherwise, the Health Department has had Zoom meetings or other kinds of meetings with individual members privately. I just mentioned this because I know the Health Department's really busy right now. So, just to mention that point.
That's, that's good to know, but I also think that if they're going to be putting out such strict regulations on our schoolchildren and our people, then they are really, they do have to provide answers to the questions of these people. These are the parents of the schoolchildren whose lives they're impacting or purporting to impact. So at this point, someone should come here, and maybe it's Collette, I don't know. I'd hate to see her be put on the spot again because she has to answer a lot of questions with "I don't know" or whatever, and it's also not fair to her. But at the end of the day, if the Health Department is going to continue to do what they're doing, outside of the guise of a full round of information, the public has the right to hear from them.
Excuse me, Dr. Taylor. Is our, our policy is based on Senate Bill 1303, not anything the Health Department?
Okay, at this point, I would say, we're going to be discussing the policy. The policy is different from what we're talking about on the item. And there's a lot, there's a lot going on right now, but I think what Ms. Hallstead is asking is that we have some questions answered by the Health Department, and I would suggest that we ask Ms. Hallstead to put those questions together, send them to Dr. Taylor, and share with the Board, and then ask the Health Department to respond to those questions. Then we'd have the response, and certainly, if they are available, to ask them to attend our next meeting, because whenever there's questions and answers, there's always going to be follow-up questions. But at least we will get, we'll have an opportunity to submit the questions and get the answers. And as, you know, customers, you know, local customers, we all reside in Stafford County, you know, we have that right to ask for responses. And certainly, I think what Ms. Hallstead's asking for is additional information, you know, for the purpose of, you know, making decisions. Is there any objection to the Board from that? Okay. So Ms. Hallstead, if you could send them to Dr. Taylor and share them with us, then we can get those answers. And then, of course, when the answers come in, we would ask for them before the meeting so we'd have a chance to, you know, to look at them and see if there's any more information. Ms. Randall?
I do want to say, follow up with what Dr. Chase was saying. That was helpful when the, the Health Department did not come, but they invited us individually or in groups of two to ask questions and listen to presentations and in a Zoom meeting. So we were invited into that. So if some, I agree with Ms. Hallstead, if they could come, that'd be awesome, but if we need a Plan B, it would be good to be able to be allowed to talk to them ourselves. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Sigmund?
In the interest of being able to ask the right questions, can we go on record as to what we mean by non-employees and non-school buildings? Maybe outline some circumstances where that would be the case. Maybe Dr. Taylor is a good way to explain what that means?
Well, that's something that we would do internally. That would not relate to the Health Department.
No, just, that's what I mean.
Yes, oh, yes.
Preparing for the future meeting when we discuss it, what populations, what buildings are we actually talking about this impacting? It seems like everybody else, but we need to define that.
We can get, and that information we would ask for you to provide for us. And of course, that would be made part of the record for the public information as well, since it's going to be related to an agenda item, yes, Ms. Hallstead?
I just want to also clarify that I think the fact of the matter is, is that these good people are looking for that clarification of where we're going to start to return to normal and recover from what's been happening. But also, I mean, these guys have concerns outside of just not helping, their kids aren't learning. And so that has to be reflected, I think, in the questions as well. So I don't know how expansive you'd want me to be, but I would like to have a little bit of latitude with the questions that I can ask the Health Department, because we're not just talking about folks that are in these non-school buildings. We're talking about kids who are really suffering in the learning and the education field.
I don't think we're putting a limit on what you can ask. I think that the only distinction would be, we don't want to ask the Health Department for guidance on any item that is clearly within the purview of the school board.
Correct, okay, great.
And if there's any question, then you can discuss with Dr. Taylor, or if we need to bring it to the Board, we can have that discussion with, you know, with the entire Board. But I don't, I don't want the Health Department guidance on anything other than, you know, what their area of responsibility is.
Great, okay, thank you.
And I think Ms. Sigmund's question has to do with Stafford County Public Schools. And actually, Mrs. Randall and I are the ones that put it on the agenda so we could, we could tell you what we thought, but I think we'll go to the source here. Not tonight, before the, before the next meeting. Any other discussion? All in favor. All right, all in favor of the approval of the agenda with deferring 11.03. Now, I just want to make one point. Up to this time, we have not required people addressing the Board or the Board members speaking at the meetings to wear masks, and there's not going to be any change to that practice.
Not when people are speaking.
Okay, just, just so we're clear. Approval of the agenda, please say aye.
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 All opposed. Motion passes unanimously. All right, this brings us to the fun part. And we'll start with, these are the resolutions honoring former Board members Holly Hazard, who has a front row seat in the second tier here, Irene Hollerback, and Pamela Young. Ms. Young's across the street, so that's probably why we're not going to see her tonight. But I'd like to recognize Ms. Sandra Osborne, Director of Public and Community Relations.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board members, and Dr. Taylor. Resolution to recognize Holly H. Hazard's contributions to the Stafford County Public Schools, December 13th, 2012 through December 31st, 2021.
Does Ms. Hazard want to come down? Come on down.
It's nice in this area.
Get the other side of the street, if you.
Thanks for coming back.
Did you forget?
Whereas Holly H. Hazard was appointed by the School Board in December 2012 to fill the vacant Hartwood seat on the Board, and was then elected by the citizens of the Hartwood District in November 2013 and November 2018 to continue representing their community on the School Board of Stafford County. And whereas during her tenure as a School Board Member, Ms. Hazard served as the Board Vice Chair for two years and as the Board Chair for four years, and served on the Finance and Budget Committee, Governance Committee, Joint Schools Working Committee, Legislative Committee, Head Start Policy Council, Student Discipline Committee, and Finance Performing Arts Advisory Council Committee. And whereas, Ms. Hazard served on the School Board during challenging times, including the worldwide economic recession and an unprecedented worldwide pandemic. And whereas, Ms. Hazard advocated infatigably for the needs of the staff, faculty, students, and families of this rapidly growing school system. And whereas, the roles of the School Board Member and Board Chair demanding and sometimes thankless, and Stafford County Public Schools has been fortunate indeed to have had Ms. Hazard as the Hartwood School Board Member since 2012. And whereas, the School Division conveys to Ms. Hazard our deepest appreciation for the work that she has done in support of education in Stafford County. And whereas, the School Division hopes that Ms. Hazard will continue to support and advocate for students, staff, and families of Stafford County Public Schools. Now, therefore be it resolved that the School Board and the staff, faculty, and students of Stafford County Public Schools express profound gratitude to Holly H. Hazard for her tireless dedication to our school community and to the people of Stafford County at large, and wish her well in her future endeavors. And further, that this resolution of appreciation and support be duly recorded within the minutes of the School Board of Stafford County, adopted by the School Board of Stafford County on this 11th day of January 2022.
Thank you.
Oh, Ms. Hazard?
Photo op, photo op.
Okay, Holly, no objection on my end.
Of course.
Oh, the official. Oh, in the middle.
And we won't be there.
All right. Resolution to recognize Irene M. Hollerback's contribution to the Stafford County Public Schools, November 15th, 2013 through December 31st, 2021. Whereas Irene M. Hollerback was appointed to the School Board in November 2013 to fill the vacant Acquia seat on the School Board, and was then elected by the citizens of Acquia District in November 2017 to continue representing their community on the School Board of Stafford County. And whereas during her tenure as the School Board Member, Ms. Hollerback served as Board Vice Chair for two years and served on the Finance and Budget Committee, Governance Committee, Joint Schools Working Committee, Legislative Committee, Public and Private Day School Committee, Student Discipline Committee, and CIP Advisory Committee. And whereas, Ms. Hollerback served on the School Board during a challenging time that a redistricting effort and an unprecedented worldwide pandemic. And whereas, Ms. Hollerback provided insight and analysis based on her professional experience in the legislative and nonprofit sectors. And whereas, the job of a School Board Member is not for the faint of heart, and Stafford County Public Schools has been fortunate to have had Ms. Hollerback as the Acquia School Board Chair since 2013. And whereas, the School Division conveys to Ms. Hollerback our utmost appreciation for the work that she has done in support of education in Stafford County. And whereas, the School Division hopes that Ms. Hollerback will continue to support and advocate for the students, staff, and families of Stafford County Public Schools. Now, therefore be it resolved that the School Board and the staff, faculty, and students of Stafford County Public Schools express profound gratitude to Irene M. Hollerback for her tireless dedication to our school community and to the people of Stafford County at large, and wish her well in her future endeavors. And further, that this resolution of appreciation and support be duly recorded within the minutes of the Stafford Board of Stafford County, the School Board of Stafford County, adopted by the School Board of Stafford County on this 11th day of January 2022. Resolution to recognize our Pamela Young's contributions to Stafford County Public Schools, January 1st, 2018 through December 31st, 2021. Whereas, Renalta Pamela Young was elected by the citizens of the Garrisonville District to represent their community on the School Board of Stafford County. And whereas during her tenure as a School Board Member, Ms. Young served on the Finance and Budget Committee, Joint Schools Working Committee, Legislative Committee, Student Discipline Committee, CTE Advisory Committee, Gifted Advisory Committee, and Technology Advisory Committee. And whereas, Ms. Young served on the School Board during a challenging time that involved equity and equality issues, a redistricting effort, and an unprecedented worldwide pandemic. And whereas, Ms. Young provided insight and wisdom gained from her personal experiences as an advocate for persons from marginalized and underserved communities. And whereas, the job of a School Board Member is not for the faint of heart, and Stafford County Public Schools has been fortunate to have had Ms. Young as the Garrisonville School Board Member for the past four years. And whereas, the School Division conveys to Ms. Young our utmost appreciation for the work that she has done in support of education in Stafford County. And whereas, the School Division hopes that Ms. Young will continue to support and advocate for the students, staff, and families of Stafford County Public Schools. Now, therefore be it resolved that the School Board and staff, faculty, and students of Stafford County Public Schools express profound gratitude to Renalta Pamela Young for her tireless dedication to our school community and the people of Stafford County at large, and wish her well in her future endeavors. And further, that this resolution of appreciation and support be duly recorded within the minutes of the School Board of Stafford County, adopted by the School Board of Stafford County on this 11th day of January 2022. Thank you, ladies.
And we have more, right? All right, that brings us to item 5.02, Proclamation for Virginia School Principals Appreciation Week. Dr. Jones?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the School Board, Dr. Taylor. And let me, before I read this resolution, let me also just note, as an executive privilege, we ask principals not to come to the meeting tonight. We figured they could use a night off. Whereas, school principals and assistant principals work cooperatively to direct, develop, and inspire all members of the school staff and student body, and to communicate effectively with parents to engage them in the learning process. And whereas, principals and assistant principals serve as educational leaders responsible for managing the policies, regulations, and procedures necessary to ensure a safe and effective learning environment for all students in Virginia's public and private schools. And whereas, principals and assistant principals are entrusted with the opportunity and responsibility of guiding, directing, nurturing, mentoring, and imparting knowledge to our children while they're at school. And whereas, principals and assistant principals must work collaboratively with teachers, staff, students, parents, and the community at large to proactively prepare students to be self-reliant and productive citizens. Whereas, Virginia School Principals Appreciation Week is an opportunity to recognize the hard work of Virginia school principals and assistant principals, and to recognize the importance of principals and assistant principals in ensuring that every child has access to a quality education. And whereas, Stafford County Public Schools is especially pleased to have all principals and assistant principals leading their schools during this challenging time and to recognize them. I'm not going to read all of their names. It'll take several minutes to do that. Now, therefore be it resolved by the School Board of Stafford County that January 8th through 14th, 2022 will be celebrated as Virginia School Principals Appreciation Week throughout the School Division, adopted by the School Board of Stafford County on this 11th day of January 2022. And I also will let you know that we, as you won't be surprised, we have some special gifts that we're, that we are sending to principals to show our appreciation.
Very nice. Thank you, Dr. Jones.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to 5.03, Commendations of Excellence. Ms. Osborne?
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board members, and Dr. Taylor. The Superintendent would like to recognize individuals each month who have contributed significantly to the goodwill and advancement of positive culture among their school, department, and
of positive culture among their school, department, and/or community. I cannot think of a better opportunity to begin our regular monthly recognitions than by illustrating the efforts of those being honored tonight. Last week, we witnessed a tremendous community response to an extreme winter storm that wreaked havoc on our county. Thank you to the many individuals who assisted your neighbors. You are truly what makes Stafford County a great place to live and learn. Several SEPS staff worked tirelessly alongside private citizens, law enforcement personnel, the fire and rescue department, and Stafford County government to assist in providing emergency efforts to our community. These individuals were instrumental in providing a strategic and thorough response to the winter storm that included communication, maintenance, engineering, technology, and transportation efforts among a multitude of other actions. Recipients, as I call your name, please move to the front of the dais where you will receive a certificate of commendation. Please move to the side and remain at the dais until all recipients have been recognized. We will be taking a group photo at the end of the presentation. The Stafford County Fire and Rescue Department and the Stafford County Sheriff's Office.
If you all just hold your applause to the end, we've got a little bit to go. Early on Monday, January 3, the Stafford County Emergency Operations Center was activated in response to the incoming snowstorm. Over the next approximately 100 hours, the EOC was staffed continuously by members of many county departments working to support emergency response efforts across the county, including supporting efforts in the field, not only by fire and rescue, but also the sheriff's office, county utilities, power companies, plows, and our state and local partners. The Stafford County Sheriff's Office worked in concert with the Fire and Rescue Department and other county departments to staff the Emergency Communications Center. The EOC handled the tremendous influx of 911 and administrative calls, seeing a spike of 10 times the normal call volume. Deputies responded to accidents, disabled vehicles, and other emergency calls throughout the storm, and assisted with removing downed trees from the roadways. Due to power outages and issues with cellphone coverage, deputies performed welfare checks throughout the county for distraught, out-of-area relatives that could not reach their loved ones and called the sheriff's office. We are especially grateful to Deputy Stam, who provided one of our school buses with an escort between the shelter, the public safety building, and Stafford Hospital Tuesday, ensuring those in need of emergency shelter were transported safely. We appreciate the support of our county partners to help staff the EOC, staff the shelter, clear county parking lots and sidewalks, and arrange for fuel and maintenance of generators to power the Humphrey Building and radio towers. We are blessed and fortunate to have such a dedicated team in all areas of county operations. Accepting the certificate on behalf of the Sheriff's Department is Sergeant Burgess. Mr. Greg Martin. Mr. Martin provided the critical link between the County Emergency Operations Center, first responders, county staff, and the school division, relaying important closure information, providing emergency shelter information to share with the community, and relaying updates regarding school power and building status. Mr. Martin put in tireless, near 18-hour days consecutively, beginning this work before the storm in order to prepare for potential closures and storm operations, and continuing the communication through even this morning as we evaluated road passability and the impact of the winter storm on school operations. Thank you, Greg. Mr. Rob Adams. The Operations and Maintenance Department, as well as the ABM staff, both led by Mr. Adams, provided the necessary response required to care for our schools and facilities during the storm and afterward, ensuring that when we opened to students and staff, our buildings were functioning properly, warm, and safely prepared for their arrivals. Mr. Adams actively led the team effort to clear ice and snow from the buildings, oversaw emergency repairs, and provided regular updates regarding facility conditions and necessary repairs to division leaderships. Thank you, Rob. Mr. Benjamin Guest. Unfortunately, he's not going to be with us tonight, but we're going to celebrate him anyway. Mr. Guest assisted in coordinating the necessary resources for snow and ice control measures while general maintenance lead was out on medical leave. He coordinated with essential maintenance staff to ensure all necessary equipment was available and provided, additionally dispatching workers throughout the week to complete snow and ice removal operations. Mr. Guest also took the lead on removing trees from parking and driveway areas across the division. When equipment failed, Mr. Guest coordinated with fleet services to conduct the necessary repairs. Thank you, Ben. Mr. Britton Scott, Mr. Richard Beard, and Mr. Stacy Gentry. At 12:00 midnight on January 4, SEPS was notified that 30 people were stranded on I-95 and needed shelter. The County Emergency Operations Center was activated, and cots and bedding were brought to Stafford High School. At 2:00 AM, Mr. Martin was notified there was no power and the generator was not working at the school. Mr. Martin contacted Mr. Gentry, Mr. Beard, and Mr. Scott, who mobilized to assess the generator. In the middle of treacherous conditions, these three gentlemen proceeded to Stafford High School to fix the generator so people in the shelter would get warmth. It took them several hours to navigate the dangerous roads and get to the school, but they took initiative to get the job done for our citizens. Additionally, Mr. Gentry tracked the operating status of all division-owned generators, coordinating the repairs and refueling efforts to ensure the buildings remained operational. Thank you, Britton, Richard, and Stacy. Mr. Alan Hicks. Stafford High School's principal, Mr. Hicks, coordinated with the Emergency Operations Center and literally opened the doors of his school as an emergency shelter. Principal Hicks was at the school, locking and unlocking doors, checking on the citizens, attending to their needs, and providing a constant sense of calm and reassurance to those at the shelter. His compassion is genuine and unwavering. It is clear that he exemplifies the goodwill of our school division. Thank you, Alan. Mr. Kiba Baldwin. At 4:15 AM on Tuesday, the Emergency Operations Center informed Mr. Martin that people were walking from I-95 to Route 1 and Garrisonville Road looking for medical assistance. At 4:45 AM, Mr. Baldwin was contacted to determine if any buses were available to help the EOC transport people to the shelter at Stafford High School. At that point, I-95 was at a standstill. People had been stranded for 15 hours and were running out of gas. Mr. Baldwin made phone calls and sent a notification through Parent Link and was able to identify two drivers who were able to assist with the transportation efforts. Additionally, Mr. Baldwin personally transported citizens from the shelter to the Public Safety Center, their homes, to a hotel, and many other locations throughout the county. Thank you, Kiba. Ms. Georgia Topley and Mr. William Marsh. Ms. Topley and Mr. Marsh, both of whom had no power in their homes, provided school bus transportation for citizens on Tuesday in support of emergency request. These two drivers staged at the temporary shelter, providing transportation to and from the Public Safety Building and Stafford Hospital as required. Thank you, Georgia and William. Ms. Barbara Lancaster, Mr. Keith Martin, and Mr. Sean Daniels. Ms. Lancaster, a 38-year veteran of the Transportation Services Department, Mr. Martin and Mr. Daniels provided critical insight on past practices and communication between drivers and Mr. Baldwin. This insight allowed Mr. Baldwin to identify the most appropriate driver pool to assist with emergency transportation, as well as important historical safety and communication practices necessary to ensure the drivers were cared for while transporting our citizens. Thank you, Barbara, Keith, and Sean. Come on down. Mr. Hunter Matheson. It is difficult to recognize individual accomplishments to restore technology systems. Many of the network engineers were working to restore systems even before main power was restored in their own homes or school buildings. Hundreds of network and server systems were checked and repaired as needed in the aftermath of the storm. This level of dedication to the mission of Stafford County Schools is typical of the engineer team and the entire technology department. Mr. Matheson and his team worked tirelessly to restore technology services across the school division in the aftermath of the snowstorm. The team checked over 200 server systems, approximately 2,700 network switches and Wi-Fi access points, and more than 2,000 security cameras. Fortunately, once the monitoring server was restored, most of the checking was automated, but much of the equipment needed manual intervention to bring online. Thank you, Hunter. And now, Mr. Berry, if you'll pass me the phone. Mr. Hunter Berry. Mr. Berry, as the only member of the communication team who had electricity, was instrumental in communicating critical updates to the school division community. Mr. Berry relayed Parent Link and Stafford Alert notifications to more than 71,000 individuals through text, phone call, and email. He single-handedly used the individual reporting systems of all television, radio, and print media outlets from Richmond to Washington DC and all points between to publish the closures. Further, Hunter continually provided social media updates and graphics regarding the closures, resharing key information regarding shelter operations, safety tips, and other important status updates from our county and law enforcement partners. From the bottom of my heart, thank you, Hunter.
And then if you'll all kind of maybe gather here, here. Actually, why don't you all step out here? We're going to come right here.
Missy, while they're doing that, can you put the names up?
I got to tell you, we had some superheroes step up.
Oh, my gosh, I always love looking for helpful people. I always look at.
I do have some closing remarks. The actions described tonight were among many others that the division is likely not even aware occurred. Our educators, our staff, our first responders, and our community partners truly shined, working together to ensure doors were open, citizens were cared for, and we were able to return to work safely. SEPS is grateful to these citizens, for our public safety departments, the first responders, and the many crews that worked tirelessly to clear the roads and restore staff power in Stafford County. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Osborne. One name that was not on that list, but was the coordinator for all that, was Dr. Taylor. Other than the sheriff's office, everyone up there works for him. So I want to thank Dr. Taylor for hitting the ground running, or should we say the ice running? You're what, one month on the job, one month plus a couple of days on the job? You did great. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wish I could take some credit for this, Madam Chair. We have an extraordinary team. And what better way to kick off our new year by recognizing the hard work of our outstanding team? And it just goes to show that many hands make light work, especially in challenging situations. And when our team bands together, we are unstoppable. And they're just an absolutely fantastic team to work with. And we're just so grateful. Thank you so much, Madam Chair.
Thank you. All right. That brings us to citizen comments. These remarks are the same old, same old, but I'm going to read them. 6.01, "Three minutes are allotted to each speaker or group. Speakers are encouraged to provide a copy of the comments to the board clerk. Speakers shall identify themselves by name and organizational affiliation if the spokesperson represents an organization. Speakers shall also announce the purpose or topic of their comments. The chairperson reserves the right to restrict the total citizen comments to a predetermined maximum number of minutes with the approval of the board. Citizen comment which is profane, abusive, or which threatens imminent physical harm shall be ruled out of order by the chairperson. Although the board provides the opportunity for citizen comment, individuals desiring to register complaints against division employees or division programs, services, or activities may also utilize the procedures outlined in Stafford County Public School Policy 1113 Public Complaints." We have nine people who signed up to comment. So I'm going to call those names. When we finish with the people who signed up, anyone else who wishes to address the board can come forward. And we have a sign-up sheet that you can sign in after you've made your remarks. And I'm going to call these, I'll just call them three at a time so people can line up and not have to wait to come down to the microphone. The first speaker is Margaret Lowery. The second speaker is Carol Leicher. And the third speaker is Michelle Wickman.
Good evening, school board members and Dr. Taylor. I want to congratulate our three new school board members and our new chair and vice chair. And I'd like to congratulate, I'm following up at a great time to follow those wonderful people who've just been recognized for their unselfish acts during these last week. My name is Margaret Lowery. I'm a resident of Rock Hill District and a retired assistant principal for activities and athletics at North Stafford High School. At the December of school board meeting, I provided a packet of information for all board members. And I am providing a packet for the three new members tonight. I'm also distributing a copy of a recent article in the Freelance Star that stresses the value of participation in high school athletics and the benefits of financially supporting athletics. Thank you to all of you for choosing to serve Stafford County. You've chosen a position that can sometimes become a thankless job because you have so many schools with so many needs. We sincerely appreciate that Stafford County was moving in a progressive direction when artificial turf was installed in three of the five high schools in 2014 and 2015. It is time to catch up to today's standards in athletic competition fields by finding the funds to install turf fields in the stadiums at Colonial Forge and North Stafford High Schools. The CIP that was proposed in September of 2021 has turf fields scheduled for 2024. It's unfair to let these schools wait that long. The students in these two schools deserve the same opportunities on quality fields as the three high schools that have had turf fields for seven to eight years. Think about the snow we just had. Oftentimes, we have snow and rain in February when our spring sports begin. Today, three high schools could use their stadium for games and practices because the snow has melted. But the melting snow has created a mud fest at Forge and North. 16 soccer and lacrosse teams will have to choose to either cancel practice, move to the parking lot or the gym, or pay to rent a turf field. I'm asking you to find funds to address. I'm asking you to find funds to address this parity issue by installing turf fields in 2022, not 2024. In his first 100-an-entry plan, Superintendent Taylor emphasizes the need for equity. Dr. Taylor stated, "Together, we will continuously improve to make Stafford County Public Schools the undeniable world leader in equity of opportunity, student engagement, and support. Now is the time to solve that issue." Thank you.
Ms. Leicher. Why, I don't need the titles. I just want the names. Okay, thank you. Time doesn't start till the clerk punches the button.
I'm good. I'm good. I love the names.
Thank you. Thank you, Missy.
Members of the school board and Superintendent Dr. Taylor, my name is Carol Leicher, and I live in the George Washington District, and I'm presently a volunteer coach at North Stafford High School where I was a teacher and coach for over half my career. I am here to follow up on promoting parity of quality playing fields in our high schools. I was energized to come back and speak to the board by an article in the Freelance Star this past Sunday on the opinion page. We have shared a copy of that article, "Sports Changes Lives on Field and at Work," for your review. A line jumped out to me in the third paragraph of the article, and I quote, "We are spending too much money and time on athletics. New turf fields for each of the high schools in recent years, for example, when academic achievement is arguably more important. I have to say, I was impressed that turf fields in each of the high schools is mentioned, something that is now so accepted but not truly in Stafford County. But also, the expense was cited, and I got worried. Would the article not support the expense of quality turf fields?" The article goes on to cite several studies that the document and the many benefits of being a high school athlete. A few of those benefits included that these varsity participants were more likely to take college classes, more likely to participate in fitness activities into their late twenties, more likely to exercise in their seventies. And my favorite was, "Most women executives agree that sports had given them a competitive edge in business." So back to the original question, are we spending too much time and money on athletics? The author concludes, and I paraphrase, "Given the overwhelming benefits to high school athletes, we might not ask, are we putting on too much emphasis, but is it too little? Therefore, we can conclude that spending money on high school sports is advantageous to our student athletes and their overall development and future. We are moving to a positive direction with Stafford providing quality playing fields of turf in '14 and '15 for three of our high schools. It doesn't seem fair to make two schools wait ten years for quality playing fields in 2024. We need the board's support to right a wrong by installing turf at North Stafford and Colonial Forge for parity as soon as possible. It will be worth finding the money now for the equity of our current student athletes who are doing without." And I want to welcome the new board members, and thank you for the chance to speak.
Thank you. After Ms. Wickman, you're fine. Michelle Wickman is next. We called her, but then Bonnie Thoman, Stephanie Mohica, and Chris Pixley will follow.
Good evening, members of the board. Dr. Taylor, my name is Michelle Wickman. I'm a resident of Hampton Oaks, a parent of two children in SCPS schools, and a teacher at North Stafford World's Greatest High School. I know that y'all deferred this, but my information is relevant no matter when you discuss it, so we're just going to roll with it. As a librarian, much of my time is spent teaching students how to evaluate their sources. At North, we use what's called the CRAP test, an acronym that stands for currency, relevance, authority, accuracy, and purpose. I joke with the kids that they can use this acronym to determine if their source is total crap, and this usually helps them remember it better. Due to the ever-changing nature of the pandemic, as with anything else in the scientific field, it's important to use the most current and authoritative sources when making decisions. The documents in the agenda for this information item are from March, August, and September of 2021, and they reference sources at least that old. Authoritative sources in this instance would be scientists, particularly experts in viral diseases. The CDC has masking guidelines derived from the National Center for Immunization and Respiratory Diseases, Division of Viral Diseases, arguably the most authoritative source on the subject. These guidelines, which were updated October 25, 2021, state that everyone two years or older who is not fully vaccinated should wear a mask in indoor public places. Regarding vaccinated persons, they say if you are fully vaccinated, to maximize protection and prevent possibly spreading COVID-19 to others, wear a mask indoors in public if you are in an area of substantial or high transmission. Earlier today, I emailed you a screenshot from the CDC website with seven-day COVID metrics for Stafford County, current as of today. It clearly states that everyone in Stafford County, Virginia, should wear a mask in public indoor settings because transmission is high. The Virginia Department of Health, another reliable source, also recommends following CDC guidelines. Their recently updated website states, "Important: Everyone aged two and up should wear a mask in indoor public spaces. Virginia communities currently have high levels of COVID-19 transmission." In information item 12.01 on tonight's agenda, you're asked to adopt new quarantine guidelines based on recent CDC recommendations, as you've done in the past. I don't understand why CDC guidance is used to make that important decision, but not this one. Personal views and political stance have no place here. These things actually constitute bias, something that the purpose in the CRAP test tells us to watch out for. Until the science supports it, please do not make the decision to remove mask mandates in any SCPS buildings, non-school or otherwise, as this would clearly be against current expert guidance, putting our employees and students at risk. Help me out here. Let's reinforce research skills and model appropriate source evaluation for the students of SCPS. I've included my references below in APA format. I'll submit this, so you can take a look if you'd like to. Thank you for your consideration.
Good evening, everyone, board members, and Dr. Taylor.
Okay. My name is Bonnie Thoman. I live at 27 Creek Run Road. I'm retired from the school system, and I'm currently a coach at North Stafford High School. And I'm here to address discrimination through cyberbullying. I've given the clerk my long speech, however, since I only have three minutes, I'll say what I can. In front of you, which I wish you had it in front of you, are the school board's nondiscrimination statement, which is on your website and also in notice in the Student Code of Conduct Handbook. And just to be clear, the handbook applies to not only students, but all Stafford County employees, as well as members of the board. Also in that handout are two pictures that were posted on social media. My three children graduated from North Stafford High School. My youngest daughter is gay. She's a foreign-area officer in the army, 16 years, who is currently serving an unaccompanied tour of duty in Iraq. This means being separated from her wife and family for a year. We just celebrated Christmas without her. She and her wife are strong, confident, compassionate women who can handle the kind of people who post these pictures. However, our young Stafford County students, who may be gay, transgender, Muslim, or immigrants, are not so well-equipped mentally to face this type of blatant discrimination. I don't have the time to address all the slurs in these pictures. However, a few examples. First, a child is labeled gay. Another child is labeled really, really gay. This is unbelievable. Second is the young girl with a Nazi swastika on her shirt. This symbol is specifically listed as prohibited in your own Student Code of Conduct Handbook, page 25. Third is the Muslim reference. "We live in the greatest nation in the world. America stands for freedom, especially freedom of religion. Yet we have people who have no tolerance for other religions. They belittle and falsely accuse 1.9 billion Muslims of all being terrorists." Is there any doubt in your mind that this is cyberbullying? I know I'm not going to change anyone's beliefs, but I can and I will hold you responsible for complying with your own established policy as a board member or as a candidate for the board. I don't know what the percentages are, but I would say that the Muslim, gay, transgender, and immigrant students make up a fairly good piece of Stafford County students. You can't pick and choose what students you want to represent. Your job is to represent all of them. There is no apology or no excuse that makes these posts anything other than hate for these students.
Thoman, the time is up.
May I say one more sentence?
One more.
If you cannot separate your personal beliefs from your position as a school board member and its responsibilities and its restrictions, you don't belong on this board. Thank you.
Chris Pixley is next, and then Kathy Butler.
My name is Stephanie Mohica. I reside in the Garrisonville District, and I am speaking on behalf of Moms for Liberty Stafford Chapter. I believe the mask should be a parent's choice. For some children, they are fine wearing the mask, while other children struggle wearing it. My child, who suffers from speech apaxia, has had a difficult time with kids understanding what he is saying while wearing his mask. He told me that sometimes he doesn't communicate as much with his peers because kids don't understand him. For any parent hearing this, it is heartbreaking. This is not good for his self-esteem. I know that it can't be my child only who is dealing with these types of issues, especially a child with special needs and a young child who is developing language and emotional skills. The whole picture of wearing a mask and the damage it is causing now and in the future is not being analyzed. COVID is here to stay. There needs to be other, more effective solutions implemented. I have heard from a few sources that filters and air purifiers are not being replaced in a timely manner in our Stafford Public School Buildings, which has been brought up numerous times to the proper department with no or little results from what I'm aware of. Listed on the EPA website, it states that "When used properly, air cleansers and HVAC filters can help reduce born contaminants, including viruses, in a building or small space. Having these filters routinely changed and serviced is supposed to be a precautionary measure to help reduce viruses and germs from spreading in our schools to keep staff and students safe. In order for an air cleanser to be effective in removing viruses from the air, it must be able to remove small airborne particles. How can it properly do that when filters are on back orders and not going to be available for a few months and maintenance is not being performed? One source mentioned that the light on their air purifier had been red since August and was changed right before Christmas break. I was told that a library and a cafeteria in an elementary school has not had their air purifier properly maintained, and the red light continues to blink. I have also heard that the electrostatic gun that is a disinfectant solution may have not been utilized in a school, since it hasn't been seen being used or mentioned. I'm asking you to please address this issue promptly. If everyone is so concerned about the virus, then it would be a priority that air purifiers are properly taken care of, so it can be effective and help reduce the spread. Thank you, and have a good night."
Mr. Pixley.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I never thought I'd ever be in front of one of these boards, ever. So thank you very much for having me. I'd like to address something that my wife brought up to my attention earlier today. It's super important. These laptops, they served a great purpose during COVID, and there's no denying that at all, but COVID is not going anywhere. And right now, I feel like these things are a huge hindrance for our children right now. I really, really do. My wife talked to the computer technician at our school, and he just told us outright that they don't block any kind of social media, gaming, chat, digital media distribution. They can stream on school networks, on these laptops. And students are able to use their school emails to set up and open up accounts. Like, I can control stuff at home, but if they have their own email account that they're setting open to Netflix, Hulu, whatever they have access to, you know, that's what they're The county's lax restrictions on these major negative have had major negative impact on kids' ability to focus, their integrity, as far as paying attention to class instead of playing on their laptops and whatnot. We're just giving them access to way too much stuff. I talked to the teacher, and they said that YouTube is an instruction, like they use it for an educational resource. I mean, do you know how wide of a range of stuff is on YouTube right now? I mean, absolutely. I can learn how to change my breaks on YouTube, but there's a lot of stuff you don't want to learn. This is my daughter's laptop that she got from the school, and it's connected to your Wi-Fi, the Stafford Wi-Fi right now. Since I've been sitting here, I've opened up an Xbox game that I can stream and play games, Netflix, where, you know, there's mature-rated content on Netflix, YouTube. So yeah, YouTube's an educational resource, I agree, but there's a lot of that. There's a lot of smut, and there's a lot of junk on YouTube. This is on your network. Going over to Facebook, social media, seeing stuff like this to a 13-year-old girl, these women are fake. Do you have any idea what this does to a 13-year-old girl's self-image when they... They don't need that. Get rid of it. And here's the big one. A 241 document for the anarchist cookbook, how to make bombs, how to try to card hack, you name it, right here in front of you on your network on my daughter's computer. If I'm able to do this in 10 minutes sitting right here, I mean, I don't know what these kids can do in eight hours alone. So, you know, thank you so much for your time.
After Ms. Butler, Elizabeth, and you're going to have to correct me on this, but Tammy Young and Quinn Centillo.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Taylor. I'm Kathy Butler, and I reside in the Rock Hill District. I'm an administrative assistant at AG Wright Middle School and the president of the SCA. I'm here to talk to you about my story. January 1, 2021, my world turned upside down. Despite all our preventive measures, COVID veered its ugly head in the Butler household. I was scheduled for surgery that coming Monday. That had to immediately be canceled. Workplaces needed to be contacted. The only part of my body that didn't hurt, funny enough, were my feet. Between my husband or son and myself, I had it the worst. I had never been so sick in my entire life. I couldn't get out of bed for three weeks, had raging headaches, nausea, and trouble breathing. I've never had so many panic attacks as I did during this time. On January 20, about 10 days past the time I could have gone back to work, I had to ask my son to take me to the ER. I had my biggest attack since I'd gotten sick. I couldn't breathe, couldn't take a full breath. Each breath was like I was being stabbed in my entire body. While I didn't have pneumonia, I was out for another 10 days, per the ER doctor. Currently, I still have breathing issues along with other effects from COVID. To take masks out of non-school buildings, buildings where students come for meetings, is irresponsible. We should be following the science, because despite our best efforts, numbers are on the rise. Now is not the time to reduce mitigation strategies. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Elizabeth Chinavong.
Hello. My name is Elizabeth Chinavong.
I was close.
You were close.
I've seen you before, and I apologize for not...
Oh, that's okay. I don't get offended at all. Um, so tonight, I wanted to discuss, um, trust. Uh, because I know we have a lot of new members, and we have new superintendent, so I kind of wanted to give you an idea of what, at least, I'm going through. Um, my daughter sent me a text as I was about to walk up here, and it says, I'll try not to get choked up. "Good luck, Mama. I know you can do it. Thank you for not giving up and keep fighting for this country. I love you." It makes me so proud. Um, over the past several years, I've slowly been waking up to the level of corruption in this country. I watched our last superintendent usher in political policies that the overwhelming majority of Stafford families did not support. At first, the school board sided with parents, only later to abdicate their responsibilities to represent the people. That was when I learned I could not trust our locally elected officials regardless of their political views. In November of 2019, during my son's 17, 17-year physical, I asked his doctor if he, if she thought that it would be safe to give him the COVID-19 vaccine when it became available. She was adamant that the vaccine was not for children, not even for college-age children. She made it a point to tell me that. She said that it would take years of study to determine if a vaccine was safe enough to give to the general public and many more years before it could be recommended for children. 15 to 20 is what she said. She said that it had never been tested anywhere in the world on children, and that there had never been a reported case of a child, even a college-age child, of having a severe case of COVID-19 where they did not already have a pre-existing condition. So, she said, there would be no reason to give it to a minor or any young, healthy adult for that matter. I thought to myself, good. I know I can trust this doctor because that seemed like a logical answer to me. Fast forward six months. The university that my son was, was set to attend mandated the vaccine. So, I called my pediatrician to ask for a medical exemption based on our previous conversation. And she quietly and reluctantly said, actually, we're now recommending it. What? What the heck has changed in six months that made her do a complete 180? Because her main argument was that it would take years of study to determine if it was safe. Surely, that hasn't changed in six months. And I knew then that I could not trust my doctor or any so-called experts.
After, after, excuse me, after Ms. Santillo?
Santillo.
Santillo, if anyone wishes to address the board, please line up, and then you can, you can line up on both sides and take turns coming down. Thank you.
Well, since I was planning to speak tonight, my issue has been deferred. So, I was hoping, in the effort to not be redundant, I could save my comments for next week and yield my time to Eliza if she wanted to finish, if you were willing to hear her.
Well, I, I don't think we yield time because that would create a potential issue with extended comments. But you're, you're welcome to give your comments, and it's been deferred. It's not deferred to a date certain at this point.
I want to remain relevant, so I'm going to not be redundant today.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board? Seeing none, we'll close the public comments and come to the board standing committee reports. Are there any standing committee reports? Dr. Warner?
There are no standing committee reports. We didn't meet in, uh, we met in December. Those, those, uh, that information was relayed to the board. Um, there will be a Fab meeting next week. Um, the superintendent will be presenting his preliminary budget, and, uh, the governance committee will be scheduling a meeting based on the ability to pick a date and time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other, uh, committee reports? No. All right, that brings us to board member comments. Dr. Chase, would you get it started, please?
Hello, everybody. Um, I wanted to extend a warm welcome to our three new board members. It's lovely to have you all here. I also wanted to personally thank all of the staff who's been working for the past week handling this unexpected storm. Um, great job, especially opening the Stafford High School as a shelter for folks without power. Um, and I also wanted to remind any educational professionals who might be watching from counties to our south that Stafford County Public Schools is looking for great teachers. Um, I know we have trouble filling spots in the areas of math, special education, and counseling, and I would welcome you to, um, contact our Department of Human Resources. Um, and then finally, I hope everyone has had a really great break and is ready for a wonderful second half of the school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Chase. Dr. Warner?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to wel, I too want to welcome all our new board members, and I want to, um, thank Dr. Taylor for his leadership. It's just been a month, but I think he's confronted almost every crisis you can possibly do in that space of time, and he's handled them all admirably. I do want to thank our staff. I think that it's times like this when there's a crisis within the community that we realize just how connected our schools are to the community and how important each person's role is in helping, um, get through these, these, these trying times. Um, it wasn't so much the snow. I think it was all the trees that got thrown on the ground. Um, so it was, it was a challenge. We were without power for about six days, so I could truly sympathize with the people strapped, trapped on I-95 for 27 hours. And I'm glad that, um, Mr. Hicks and our staff were able to get people transported to a shelter. Um, I hope that this, you know, this year, we can maintain our, keep our schools open. I think that that is our most important task, and I look forward to this, uh, upcoming year and the retreat and the opportunity to work with the new school board members. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Sigmund?
Uh, thanks. Uh, my comments tonight are centered around gratitude. First, I am thankful for the opportunity to serve my community on this school board. I'm grateful to the people of, of Garrisonville, who have been the best friends and neighbors our family could have asked for. I'm thankful for the six other women up here I get to serve with. I'm grateful to our new superintendent and my new SCPS teammates in every building across this county. I'm incredibly grateful to my husband, our children, and our family without whose support I could never be here, both literately and figuratively. I had an incredible mentor in college, who began her career in law. I worked with as a public servant, and she retired as a charter school teacher in New Jersey. Her advice was always the same. The elevator to success is broken. You're gonna have to take the stairs. I am looking forward to rolling up my sleeves and working hard in support of Stafford County students. I encourage, I invite, I implore you to join us. Each and every one of you, roll up your sleeves. We cannot do our jobs effectively if we do not hear from our constituents, those in the classrooms, those at home, driving the buses, providing the childcare, in the offices, and serving lunches. We are one, working towards a common goal of creating the best possible educational system for our students, families, employees, and community. And finally, I wanted to extend my congratulations to our new chair and vice chair, as well as Ms. Vanuch, as, and Ms. Young, as chair and vice chair of the Board of Supervisors, because together, under their leadership, we will make SCPS strong. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Guy?
I didn't, is this on?
Oh, you have to push it.
I'm not very tech savvy. I apologize. I didn't prepare anything, but, um, I am excited also to be here. Um, I love Stafford County. I love every district. And I'm just really happy to serve. Uh, I wrote down, I took notes because, um, I just believe that everybody's important, and I want to be able to remember specifically what each parent or community member had to say. And, um, some of the things that was brought to my attention, I didn't know, so I'm happy to learn. And, you know, poor Dr. Taylor, I'm going to be calling you to get more information. He was the last person I spoke with last night before I fell asleep and the second person I spoke with this morning, so I'm sorry if I keep on bothering you, but there's a lot of stuff. And, um, I am definitely on the steps right now, and I'm, and I'm, I'm trying to do everything I can for the county, and I'm, I'm incredibly opening to, uh, open to listening to any ideas and any thoughts. And I would just say to people to continue to advocate for the schools and advocate across the street because some of the things that we would like to do, we need more funding for. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Guy. Ms. Hosten?
Um, thank you. I, I do have something prepared, although I feel like, wait, am I on? No, that's it. Okay. Um, so unfortunately, I feel like mine is probably not as gooey as the other ones, and I want to, but I do want to say that I'm proud, very proud to be here, and I'm very proud to represent Hartwood and, and the folks who have placed their trust in me. I can't, I cannot thank you enough for that. I mean, so many people worked so hard for me and, and in the district. I know I'm not the favorite candidate, so we're going to get that out there right from the get-go. I know we have a lot of really big differences and walls that stand in our way. So, on that note, um, people talked a little bit before. Someone mentioned cyberbullying. And with cyberbullying, I'd like to mention stalking, cyberstalking. And, um, we keep talking about saving our kids and making the world a safe place for them. And during my campaign, unfortunately, I found out that my child's safety was compromised by someone on this board, um, who forwarded an email unredacted to my opponent. I'm not sure why that mean-spirited action was taken. I can assume why that mean-spirited action was taken. But that letter, which I gave to this board hoping that they would protect the information of my mind or child, because we're all passionate about what we believe in, right? Um, that letter was sent unredacted with my child's school information and her name. And then it, it hit the parade, the hate parade against, you know, from people that don't know who I actually am, as a candidate, as a person, as a mom, as a professional. So, if we're going to talk about children, our children, and their safety, then we need to really start to consider what that means. And I don't know how we build the bridge of trust again when we have a board member that would sacrifice a child so callously. And I thought maybe I would mention it today in her name, but I, I don't want my anger to be the prevailing message. I want the note to be that our children are precious commodities, and they are being hurt left and right by our elected officials not doing right by them because you want to make the popular decision and not the right one. This board has very hard decisions to make to recover from something that has been globally, globally mismanaged. We all know that. Our children are not learning. They can't read. They are insecure. They don't know who they are. They're not allowed to be. That comes through on cyberstalking, cyberbullying. I personally was stalked during my campaign. My stalker released that letter because it was given unredacted. I had to go to my child's school and tell her principal that her safety and the safety of the other kids in school was now at risk. We can't afford to have that on this board. So, if we're going to come together and we are going to work together, then I would appreciate respect from everyone, regardless of whether we agree, because I will give it, and I will give it every step of the way because I know how hard it is to sit in this seat. I know what I'm giving up to have this seat, and I know what everybody else on here is giving up to have this seat. And if we can't respect, then we don't belong anywhere near our kids. Now, a happy note, if I could, just one, because who wants to be negative the whole time? Right? On a happy note, I love snow. But I have learned that I love electricity more. Thank you.
Randall?
Thank you. I would like to wish everyone a Happy New Year. Um, despite how we started, I am also a snow lover. I didn't mind any part of it. I know that sounds horrible. I had no power. I didn't care. I had no heat. I had no water. I didn't care. So, that's just me. I like, I, I like my little hole in the ground. Just leave me there anyways. But I would like to welcome everybody back for their second semester, all of our teachers and all of our students. And it was, I know that there is no better place than to put our kids back in the schools with their teachers for as many days as we can have them in. Um, I, I just feel like teachers need their kids. They think about them when they're not with them and wonder and worry and, and really just want to, um, take care of them. Ms. Leischer, it's good to see you. I had you at North Stafford when I was there. Um, I would also like to thank the work of the Board of Supervisors, the Sheriff's Department, all the fire and rescues that, the helpful people, um, our own Stafford County Public Schools staff, to include our superintendent. I just admired so much. Gives you all the warm feels and fuzzies when you see so many helpful people, and these are the ones that are identified. But I'm sure that everyone at home, in their neighborhoods, in their communities, saw other helpful people helping them get out, helping them get food, helping them with whatever their needs were. And, um, I just always am in awe of helpful people. I would like to congratulate our new board members who are sitting up here tonight. I'm so, super excited about, um, working together as one board. I'm really excited about going on a retreat. I'm all about that. Um, I really would love to thank our former members. Some were, Holly was here. The others could not be. But I'd like to congratulate them on their resolutions for their services that they've given our board and our schools. And, um, that's it. I'm just excited that we're back to business.
Thank you, Ms. Randall. Okay, so for, for full disclosure, I like a little bit of snow. I don't like over foot, and I hate ice. So, there, there, there I am, and, and you can have all my snow. You know, I'll just come and get it. I, I want to say that I'm really looking forward to this year, working with our new members, our old members. Um, we, we have a lot to do, and we do, we have, we have some bridges to cross. And I would suggest that we all think, before we go on our retreat, about what our goals are and why we wanted to be sitting here and working for Stafford County Public Schools. Because I don't think that there's going to be much of a difference in what we like to do, how we get there, and perhaps some of the roads we choose make it more difficult. But if we're going to make progress, which, which, we, we must do that. We, we, we have to. Otherwise, we shouldn't be here. We're not here for ourselves. We're here for this community. We're here for the kids. We're here for the parents. And we need to, to put, put that perspective first and, and move forward. So, I would just ask, before we, before we go on the retreat, I'm, I'm looking forward to it. I mean, hopefully, we won't, we'll all come out whole and, you know, better, better able to, to lead because we are the leaders. And we can't, we can't lead if we're, we're not in, in control. And, and we don't have to like each other. God knows, you know, well, most people, I wouldn't say most, but a lot of people that I've worked with on this board over the past 22 years have not liked me, but we've managed to get around. I mean, that's, some of them have, a few. But, but I've, I've, I've had some good friends on the board. I've had some acquaintances. But I have had respect for everyone that's here because everyone has to give up a lot to be here. And, and, I mean, yes, it's great to win an election, but that's just the start. I mean, you're, we're, we're here for a reason. So, that's just something I'd ask people to, to keep in mind and see how we're going to move forward because we, we have to. Otherwise, it's, it's, we're cheating the community if we don't give them why they, they put, they trusted us to put us in these chairs to make these decisions. So, that's, that's enough of that. But I'm excited. I mean, we've got, we've got, you know, a really young board. Young, young, young is good. I'm talking, you know, just, just, just generally. And we have all, we have, we have new people that are, that always have great ideas and a lot to bring in. We've got some more seasoned people that, you know, have some experience. So, we, we need to blend and, and, and work together. And we have a, apparently, a superintendent who doesn't sleep because I had an issue brought to my attention last night. Y'all got copies of it, you know, potential glitch with the, with the bus schedules. And not only did he respond, you know... And not only did he respond, you know, 10 o'clock last night, when I woke up this morning and checked my phone, which I do, he responded at 4:30 in the morning. It's like, wow. I was well asleep by then. So thank you, Dr. Taylor, for doing what you do and having the energy and the, the drive to help us work through these issues. And also your leadership with the, with this crisis. I mean, this, this truly, we should be proud of Stafford County Public Schools and proud of Stafford County. And the partnership with the county and the sheriff's office made us able to do things that we couldn't have done on our own. And God bless the bus drivers driving down. I mean, I was out on Monday night. I was that close to getting stuck on 95, because I was coming back from Dulles Airport. And fortunately, we took the backroads. But just 53 miles of stuck cars? Oh, my gosh. So thank, thank you. Thank you, everybody. But we've got to hit the, hit the ground running and moving forward. And I do hope to streamline our meetings. And Dr. Taylor's got some suggestions for us on that as well. So that'll bring us to your comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I will say that the optimism for the future is genuine. I have so enjoyed getting to know this board and our new members. This board is full of industrious women who want to change Stafford County for the better. And I am so genuinely excited. I will say that behind every superintendent who goes to bed late and wakes up early, there is a team of enthusiastic staff members who are doing just the same. Greg Martin, who is still here, was on the phone with me at that hour this morning as well and has been throughout snowpocalypse that we experienced over the past week, or snowmocron, or whatever you want to call it. But we certainly have benefited from the hard work of our staff. And I am so grateful for the team that is up late with me and jumps out of bed in the morning enthusiastic to serve the kids of Stafford County. As a matter of fact, I am, I am so impressed by the fact that I have not met a single person in Stafford County on our team that is not excited about serving kids. And it's just as absolutely thrilling. We've had a lot of challenges over the past month. So Dr. Warner, Madam Chair, I echo your, your thoughts and Ms. Halsted. It has been trial by fire on some days, for sure. But we've grown a lot in a short period of time. And we've established some routines and some opportunities for us to learn from one another and to grow. And it just makes me all the more optimistic for the future. I will say that last week, without power, without snow, and unfortunately, without learning, is not how we plan to start 2022 at all. Today was the first day of the second semester of our school year. And we have action items for the board's consideration reflecting calendar changes because of it. But we have and continue to be incredibly grateful to our teachers who remain very flexible, to our fantastic parents in this community who advocate for their kids. Some that are here tonight, thank you for being here and for being a part of this process and for telling us what's on your mind so that you can be involved. We're excited to welcome you and to be a team with you, because we need your support as we move forward. And that's the only way that any of this gets done. A couple of big things happened during our snow week. It was the kickoff for Principals Appreciation Week. And it's not how we wanted to kick off Principals Appreciation Week. But there's one way we could say that we gave them the day off to kick off Principals Appreciation Week. And that's definitely not what our intent was. But we, we celebrate our hardworking principals who really are the glue that keeps the school division together. It was also Law Enforcement Appreciation Day during our, our winter weather holiday. And what better and fitting way to recognize the sacrifices of our hardworking law enforcement and sheriff's office than by our partnership and the work that we were able to do last week to keep people safe? We're very proud of that. There was a hero that was not listed earlier today, and I'd be remiss if I didn't point him out. As recent as just a couple of days ago, we were down to a handful of roads that were really giving us some heartburn and some challenges. And it might have even prevented us from opening school today and might have even delayed this school board meeting as a result. And I certainly want to thank our county administrator, Fred Presley, who was in close contact with us, the emergency management team, as well as VDOT, to make sure that we had adequate coverage for our roads and that our trouble spots that we identified were well taken care of. And we certainly thank our constituents and parents for letting us know about some of those areas, the ones we identified and the ones that they identified for us. We're just tremendously grateful. I just have a couple of quick updates and then we'll close out. It is the Phoenix Center's completion ceremony this week on Thursday at 6:00 PM. I'm really looking forward to seeing some of our successful secondary students participate in their completion ceremony this week. As part of my entry plan in my first 100 days, I've made it to 24 out of 33 schools after next week. And coming up in the following week and a half, I'll be going to Stafford Middle School, Stafford Elementary School, Moncurr Elementary School. I'll be going to the county swim meet, Pool Middle School, Brookpoint High School, Parkridge Elementary School, and a whole host of other activities with our faith leaders in this community and some of our business and community partners as well. I'll be hosting a public listen, learn, listen and learn from our community at the Quantico Corporate Center Coffee Bar from 4:00 to 5:30 on next Wednesday afternoon for anybody that would like to join us, just to sit down and chat. Coffee is on me. It's my treat. I look forward to talking to anybody who's available. We'll be hosting a series of those sessions just to get to know one another and to sit down with a cup of joe and talk about our school system and our parents. I'm really excited to meet a lot of community groups. I've got a meeting with our Moms for Liberty Group tomorrow. Thank you all for inviting me to join you. And I just add that to a long list of folks that have been so welcoming on behalf of Stafford County. And thank you so much for, for having me. Very much looking forward to our next meeting in particular. The board's next meeting, Madam Chair, I will present my fiscal 23 operating budget proposal for your consideration. That will kick off officially budget season for this board, where the board will work with the community to ascertain some of our priorities in relation to my presentation. And I'm really excited about that work. We have a lot to do. And I'm just thrilled by the energy that this board brings to that discussion. So thank you, Madam Chair. And that concludes my comments.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor. Do we have a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion by Dr. Warner, second by Ms. Randall. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Action item 10.01. I'm sorry. 11.01. Approval for the renewal of the annual maintenance and support contract with EduPoint Education Systems for the Synergy Student Information System at a cost not to exceed $235,000 from budgeted FY '22 funds. Do we have a motion for approval?
Motion to approve 11.01, please.
Do we have a second? We don't have a second, we can't discuss it. Okay, second by Ms. Guy. And that can be for discussion purposes, if you like. At least it allows us to, to discuss it. All right. Any discussion?
Can I just get a little information on what this actually means? Is this how we communicate with our parents? This is the student information system?
Absolutely. This was an information item brought to the board in December and really appreciate you asking about it. This is a continuation of our contract with our student information system. This is effectively a data warehouse where we keep all of our information, registration of our students, grade records and so forth. And it, it also is a legacy system that connects with our other systems, such as Google and, and other components of our online platform.
Okay.
And it was part of your fiscal '22 adopted budget.
Okay.
Any other questions? Any discussion? We're discussing action item 1101, which is a motion for approval. All right. No, any other discussion? Do you have anything, Dr. Chase? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. 11.02. Approval of the naming and dedication of the Stafford County Public School Department of Safety, Security and Risk Management Communication Center. Do you have a motion?
Motion to approve 11.02.
Second. Motion by Dr. Chase, second by Dr. Warner. Any discussion?
I just wanted to say that I was at the Safety and Security and Risk Department right before the holidays to pick up a cell phone. And it really looked great. And while I was there, there was actually an emergency call-in from one of our schools. And it was really great to see what a terrific job our staff did in responding to that.
Thank you. And I assume there'll be some dedication ceremony at some point in the future that we'll get an invite to, we choose to, to go. All right. All in favor of the motion to approve 11.02? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. That brings us to information items. 12.01. Consideration of recent CDC quarantine guidance change. Dr. Taylor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, I'm going to invite George Hummer, who's our Director of Student Services, Executive Director of Student Services, to present to the board.
Good evening, Madam Chair, school board members, Dr. Taylor. I don't have much to add to the information item that was submitted in regards to the updates to the CDC guidance that reduces the isolation and the quarantine days down to five days. However, I would like to add that anytime we reduce or relax any of our strategies or protocols, it does increase the risk of exposing more staff and more students. Thus, potentially, more staff and students could potentially become positive. So I am available for questions. I think the guidance is pretty clear. And just, I'm open for questions.
Okay. Any questions? Dr. Chase?
There we go. So I want to thank you for providing this information. There were two areas that I had questions, concerns about. One was athletic participation. So I recently read an article in the Wall Street Journal that warned against participating in sports too soon after a positive test, even if asymptomatic. So, and I'm not asking for an answer right now, but I would be interested in knowing what kind of advice would we be giving parents if their children are coming back? For me, as a faculty member who sometimes works with students who've had multiple concussions and the students have had lasting damage, and they say that the school never informed them of the risk of these multiple concussions. So I would hate to have a similar kind of thing happening if students are participating too soon. And I don't know the answer. So I just would like more information. And then the second thing that I read about was lunchtime. If students are returning after five days, according to what you attached, it says that they're supposed to stay at least six feet away from anybody else when unmasked. So I wondered, can our schools handle this requirement during lunchtime? I've seen things on social media claiming that our students are actually not six feet away from each other during lunchtime right now. And so if a student is coming back after only five days, do we really have space to make that happen? So those are just, just questions I have that I'd like answered before this comes for action again. And you can send it out in the weekly whatever, whatever. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Randall?
My question is, so if we change from 10 to 5, is the considerations for being infectious or quarantined, are those going to change or we keep them all the same?
Can you rephrase your question? I'm sorry.
Sure. So we have the quarantine period, but how we go about, if we shorten it to five days, is there a difference in how we identify kids that need to quarantine?
It's going to be the same process. It's just going to be a reduction in the number of days that we're going to recommend for the quarantine. Additionally, we will, we will emphasize to monitor symptoms and to continuously keep an eye on if you aren't feeling well, to then potentially get a test or to potentially extend that quarantine time if you're not feeling well. Or it could actually start the isolation time period if you actually test positive while you're quarantining.
I, I have a few questions, but I'm at a, and I don't expect an answer right now. I mean, I had reviewed this several times and looked at it. But, you know, I think the number one question has to be, if we are going to continue this precedent, then we cannot create a consistency in education for our children that's worth anything. The kids, to get my child back to school after three weeks off for Christmas was like, I cannot even tell you, right? The interruption to that schedule for her was like, I want to stay home all day and have a Thunderman's Marathon. That's going to be the rest of my life. Congratulations, right? So now I have to go back and get my kid midstream back in. This sets a dangerous precedent, as far as I'm concerned, for any other infectious disease that comes down the pike, which we have the flu. We have meningitis. We have TB. We have all kinds of infectious diseases. So we need to, I think, find a line. And we're going to have to draw that line, because our kids have to stop having their education interrupted this way. Given the current CDC announcement that their test is no good, they finally admitted it, how are we actually verifying COVID and flu and cold and any one of these other influenza-like illnesses? Because some of these kids are missing classes as healthy individuals, never exhibiting a symptom. And so their educations are being interrupted. And they're healthy as anything. And we already know we're not allowed to quarantine healthy people. This is just new, on-the-fly information. So again, I'm not trying to be difficult. We have to get to the heart of this matter. So we're going to ask the difficult questions, and those difficult questions have to be answered, because our kids, especially our high school kids, they're missing so much, so much. This is the time where we teach them with this consistency and this responsibility. You and I come to work sick. Maybe we don't have a fever. Maybe we're symptomatic. Maybe we're not. So all I'm saying is, is as we're looking to reduce this, and I think we should, we also have to be clear about the precedent that we're setting. And we have to make sure we're not going to set this long term, because COVID is here to stay. It's not going anywhere. We have to do some mental and emotional growing on that. And I'm not speaking directly to you. I'm saying in general, as a society, we have to. I get it. It's a scary thing. But at the end of the day, we have to start taking a look at this. And our job as the school board is to find out, how is that impacting Stafford County students? These constant interruptions, these constant delays in learning. The gentleman with the laptop left. I wish she hadn't, because that is the worst thing that ever happened to schools. And that's not from me. That's from hundreds of constituents that have talked to me. So I put that out there, just that we are cautious moving forward about the precedent that we're setting here with continuing quarantine and isolation of our children, healthy children, not sick children. Sick children should stay home. I mean, let's face it. But how many, I mean, how many parents have ever done that in the past? Anyway, I'd like for us to consider, if you could, the impact of that. What is the impact of us continuing to set this precedent? How are our students really being impacted? What does that look like? Talk to the students. They hate it. They don't want to go back to school anymore. So I put that out there just as a cautionary tale and a question for how we're going to look at this. When we, when Omicron is done now, we've already finished Delta. We went through our lull with that. Then we went back up with it. We could do this forever. We do it with all of our flu viruses, right? H1N1, we've got H2N7, H3N5. They all hit us whenever. We have to decide that we're not going to live that way at some point. So I leave that open. I mean, I leave that just to you as a question to kind of look at this a little bit, maybe more, objectively? Objectively? I don't remember. I mean, I don't know which one to use. But I, but, but does that make sense to you? I see this furrow in your brow, and I want to make sure that-
I'm just listening, Mrs. Halsted.
Okay. But I mean, the question really is, I mean, we have to have these answers. The parents want to know. When is this going to end? How long can it continue for them? So that's all I have to say.
Okay. So right now, the agenda item is to reduce significantly the current criteria. I think you're raising a question that goes beyond that. So that's something that we could perhaps put on as another issue. But if you have specific questions related to this, if you could send them to Dr. Taylor, anyone on the board has questions that they want answers for before this comes for action, please send them to Dr. Taylor so that he can get answers and share them with the board. And also, you know, put them on the website as well, so everyone has the same information.
So everyone has the same information.
Absolutely.
All right, any other questions, comments? Ms. Guy?
Well, I did get confused a little bit because it is reducing, and so I just was trying to, I was trying to follow because I didn't understand a lot. So, my only issue, and it's not, it's not an issue, it's just a concern. It doesn't mean I don't think we should do it, because you know, maybe it is good to reduce from 10 to 5. I just hear and I see a lot about teachers who don't, you know, can't come in because of whatever, maybe they're quarantined or they're not feeling well or whatever. I just, I just hope we don't reduce and then have more staffing shortage, which we already have a staffing shortage anyway, just on a good sunny day with before COVID. So that's the only thing I worry about, is what you said, you said that if we reduce the days, then we open up a potential to more exposure. That's the only thing that worries me, is just then causing more of a staffing shortage. But maybe, maybe it won't. And I hope, I'll be praying that it doesn't-
Again, that's why it's a risk.
Yes. Because I want us to stay open.
Absolutely.
Because we desperately need to stay open.
Yes.
Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Any other questions, comments now?
I just have one question. This would not change our policy that if someone elects to take the higher period, that's still going to be an option, right?
Oh, absolutely, yes.
It's just that they're not required to take it out.
Correct. And it's not a blanketed, Mrs. Healy, I'm sorry, it's not a blanketed, automatically go down to five days. There's a criteria, as you can see. So if you are fever-free, no symptoms, it's not just an automatic, you only have to do a five-day quarantine or isolation. There are things that you must follow in order to actually meet that five-day. So there is going to be additional work that our staff's going to have to do, but we're willing to do it as we've been doing all along.
Okay. And is this something that staff is recommending, Dr. Taylor?
At this time, the Health Department has adopted the CDC guidance, so we're staying consistent with the Health Department at this time.
All right. So any, any questions or any requests for additional information, send to Dr. Taylor so he can, you know, in enough time that he can get that back to us before the next meeting. And then this will be on for action if the board chooses to, to change that period. All right, the next information item is 12.02, approval recommended changes to the 2021-2022 school calendar and authorization for the superintendent to make emergency calendar changes in the future as needed with ratification by the board at a subsequent meeting. Dr. Taylor?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to invite Dr. Jones to come to the podium, should the board have any questions. But I just wanted to point out that this is immediately out of date. As this information was posted to the board last week on Friday afternoon, and we did have an inclement weather day that got turned into a professional day on Monday, and as a result, we do not, we do not have 994 instructional hours in our bank. We are actually a deficit of six additional hours. So, we are at 988 at the moment. So our need to make up an additional day is imminent for the board's consideration. It is proposed that the board consider the 18th of February, which is the Friday before the President's Day weekend. This was a day that the board had made a change earlier in the year as part of a wellness initiative that the board had made. Unfortunately, we don't have the luxury with the shortened school day of being able to accommodate that. It is the lowest-hanging fruit. I've also identified a few days for the board, should we find ourselves in another inclement weather day where virtual learning is not an option, that we could use, should the board authorize my ability to make an emergency change with ratification from the board later.
Any questions for Dr. Taylor? Dr. Chase?
So, in the, in the item, it says that staff is requesting this. Is staff requesting it, or are you requesting it, Dr. Taylor?
I'm requesting it.
Okay. I just wanted clarification on that. And then, I guess, you know, I mean, I don't have a problem supporting it, but what we've seen over the last couple of months is that this board doesn't support what the superintendent brings. So, if we pass this, are we really going to support it? Or are we going to come back and do something else? So I just, just not really sure what we're doing there. And then, you know, not uncommon for the Friday before President's Day for it to snow. You know, I wonder at, our taking all this instructional time out of the regular day for the bus schedule has left us also in this quandary. So just some comments, thank you.
Madam Chair, if I might address a couple of things, I think I might help illuminate. Having the shortened school day absolutely put us in a difficult position in terms of instructional hours for the stand, to meet standards of quality. We are, we are definitely in that position right now because we have a shortened school day. And that is something that we will need to bring forward to this board to correct for the next school year, absolutely. As, certainly this motion is requesting that I be able to make some emergency changes so that we can notify parents with lots of time. I think that staff has benefited from having a lot of advance notice and parents have benefited from having a lot of advanced notice. As a measure of good faith, I've identified the days that I see as low-hanging fruit for the next modifications. It is my hope also that we would go to virtual learning, should we have the ability, i.e. that the community have electricity during a future snow event, that that might be our first option for us to go to, and in which case, we would not need to make up a day. We have nine asynchronous virtual learning days that we could utilize, and I think that that's a really, really good question to ask, and I'm glad to share that.
Dr. Taylor, could you clarify the shortened school day? Are you referring to the 10, 15 minutes that we did for the buses, or the 35 minutes that was taken out at the beginning of the school year?
Thank you, ma'am. We're down to six hours. And having not been here, I couldn't tell you the specific days, but a regular school day would be closer to six and a half hours. And to accommodate some transportation and some, I'm sure, COVID recovery at the beginning of the year, this board made a difficult decision to reduce its school day. And that's a, that's a hard position to be in, especially now, because we are facing some inclement weather challenges. Having more time in the school day would make this a little bit easier. And right now, we don't have that.
Thank you.
Can I just ask one question? So you're talking about, when you talk about the nine asynchronous workdays that you have available to you, that would be like if we have these, we tend to have snow events, which are not one day of just snow cancellation, whatever. So are you talking about being able to pull the trigger on, hey, we're going to have two days off, the first day is snow day, second day is asynchronous, or go straight to a snow day, no snow day? Right? Am I asking that right?
Yeah. Dr. Nichols, if you could illuminate a little bit about what that might look like.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am, Monae. The state gave us 10 asynchronous days. So back in the fall, when we had the potential flooding and things like that, we went to an asynchronous day. We were already in school, kids had classes, so it was easy for us to go to asynchronous, to have assignments, kids could go online, use their technology. Where we find ourselves, this past week, of course, we had no power, so that would have been hard to do. And another reason we did not, some of our kids were going to the teacher for the first time for the second semester. So now that our kids are back in school, tomorrow they'll see their first teacher on their X-days, they will now have their teacher. So if we would have a snow day where we still had power, we could use one of the asynchronous days where kids would just learn at home on their computer using the technology. And so the state gives us a total of 10.
So you are able to go right into it?
Yes.
It's not like there's a, we need a day to get the kids prepared for this, you can go right into it?
No, this would be something that we would talk with our principals and looking at weather forecasts, hey, be ready with your asynchronous lessons.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Was there another question? Comment? Okay, all right. Well, this is going to come back to the board for action at the, at the next meeting. Item 12.03, approval of the 2022-2023 Middle School Program of Studies Course Catalog. Any questions about this item? Do you have a presentation you'd like to make?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to call Andy Greider up to, he's our middle school chief academic officer, to do some brief introductory remarks and then to answer any questions that the board may have.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Taylor. So last year, we had several changes to the Middle School Program of Studies. As a result of that, the changes this year are pretty minimal. Essentially, some changes with regard to some of our CT offerings to align with language from the Virginia Department of Education, so very minor there. Also, a change with regard to ensuring that in our L classes, that we indicate to parents that it is, those classes are taught by a certified L teacher. And then finally, an addition of a math class. So those are the, those are really the changes, and of course, the changes are in your agenda.
Any board member comments? Ms. Randall?
Madam Chair, I'm going to oppose this middle school curriculum. It has been something that I have followed since it was first presented. And as of my first month on the board, Ms. Healy and I got to sit for a presentation, and then Dr. Warner and I had questions, and we came back in for a presentation. And I have to say, some of the worries that I had are still the worries that I have. The fact that students are reduced from everyday English, everyday math, to every other day, and it's a problem that we have. I know it's hard, I know the data that I saw before I got on the board, and then I know since I've been on the board, it's all COVID, so it's hard to look at that data. And I really want to make this a data decision, and I'm not concerned, I'm not convinced that the data supports the actions that we're currently doing. The other thing is, is that one of the concerns that Dr. Warner and I had was, we, I was concerned that there would not be staff hired for some of these elective courses, and it was going to be put upon the teachers to teach it. And that's, I was told it wouldn't be that way, and what I'm talking to teachers and administrators, it is what it, that, put that way. Some of the programs, I know that, you know, they didn't have, and we told, we were told that this could happen, but I feel like the information or communication to the parents wasn't there, where a student is at one school and there isn't a teacher at their school, and so they're not being given the information that, oh, by the way, you're going to be virtually learning this elective course. The teachers in middle school have one planning period for their course. But that planning period has been kind of stretched to multitudes of prep work. They now have a flex time, they have to prep for that. They now have this, these electives, they have to prep for that. And then they also have the regular classwork, and they have to prep for that, too. So I just, and I also feel like some of the kids, this is meant to help give more opportunities for enriching, as well as doing interventions. And I feel like, you know, there's a lot of kids who get a choice of a lot of electives, and there's some kids that don't get as many choices of electives because they're put in an extra math class or an extra English class. Another thing that I'm having an issue with is that we give these things as ideas and exploratories throughout the middle school. I was really remiss that we did not pilot this whole thing, that we just piloted certain courses in certain schools. I just feel like there's, the way, and rolling it out during a COVID year, I thought was just really not fair to our students or our staff. So, and I'm, I would love to hear, you know, students are enjoying this, is not a data for me. I'm loving, I would love to hear more that English and math is doing better because we're doing it this way. And I know, again, it's a very difficult data point to get. But I'm just concerned that the changes that we've made has put quite a burden on our teachers. I'm also curious, because I'm hearing it, but I, obviously, like I said, data, that some of these elective courses tend to be smaller. However, the number of students in the academic classes is larger. Again, hearing it, don't know it, would love to know it. So I, like I said, I was really hoping that I would see, hear wonderful things. I'm not seeing, hearing wonderful things. Also, I see we have additional math, additional literary class, additional writing class, speech and debate, which I know is also in the eighth grade curriculum. But I just don't see, we have a lot of fine and performing arts, but I don't know that all of our middle schools have stages, and we have quite a few drama classes, and it seems to me that's something that you would, might want for that. But the other thing is, is that we don't have, like, routes for, you know, that go with some of our path, some do, but not all the pathways that we've given for study in our high schools. Nothing in the, you know, business, other than IT, nothing in health services, things like that. So I'm just, just curious, and like I said, I'm, I was uncomfortable then, I'm even more uncomfortable now. And I appreciate you listening, and I know you're writing, and I know you're thinking, and I'm sure you have some responses to me. And, and like I said, if there's data that I am not aware of, I would love to have. So, thank you, Dr. Greider.
Sure. Well, you've, you've made, as I count, 11 points. And for me to respond to all 11 points, we might be here till 11 o'clock tonight, so that might be difficult for me to do. You have a lot of really good questions, though. And I'd really love to sit down with you and to go through it. That would, I, there are a lot of things that I'd like to respond to here and now. The central point here is our program of studies, and that's really the classes that students are going to be taking for the next year. And so what you're talking about really relates to more of the program, the middle school program in general, and also the schedule that corresponded with that. And like I said, I would love to talk with you or any other board members who have questions about that overall program and the related schedule that came as a result of that. Because I, like I said, I have a lot to say about that, and I don't think that time permits tonight.
I just want to say, I would love to be involved in that meeting, just to kind of hear more about it.
Absolutely.
Because on paper, you know, it's one thing to read it, but I'd like to really have the understanding of what it means.
So just so you all know, that Dr. Jan Strike, who's Executive Director of Learning and Organizational Development, is actually in the meet tonight, so she can respond, and I would love to invite her when we do meet.
Excellent.
To have her to be a part of that. Some of her staff is also available tonight, if you had questions about the program of study specifically.
Ms. Sigmund?
Yeah, Ms. Sigmund.
Hi. Our daughter started sixth grade in 2018, 2019, under the old program. She got her electives through the wheel. We got the presentation as a parent about this, about this program, starting in seventh grade. I had reservations then. I had a meeting with my principal, you were there, Strike was there, a bunch of people were there, and I, I felt okay about it. And looking back, during COVID, I was glad our daughter had additional courses to work on, rather than just the core courses, because she had a lot of free time. Looking back, now that she's back in school, some of my original problems are there. She, taking away the everyday instruction is limiting her access to gifted education because she is not getting differentiated in her electives. Also, and I don't know if these are COVID problems or program problems, seventh grade, she took digital art, fantastic experience, signed up to take it in eighth grade, teacher's gone. Seventh grade, signed up to take changemakers, it was canceled due to COVID, totally understandable. Put her in like a homemaker's class where she was supposed to be cooking and stuff, not at my house during COVID. So, I worked with her teacher, and we got her into intro to guitar, also fantastic. Put her into changemakers in eighth grade. She got the class, they were unable to do their project due to COVID. Seventh grade, most looking forward to taking creative writing, she's a gifted English learner. Seventh grade teacher, never showed up. Had four subs before she- Had four subs before she finally had essentially someone, I don't even know who, put in. And I will say that because this was during COVID, I took a lot of these classes, too. Seventh grade, she also took math performance lab, which she loved. Seventh grade, when she was back hybrid, she took public speaking and debate, which was very difficult to do under COVID protocol because they are graded on their facial expressions, was not, was not capable. She's supposed to be taking Intro to Digital Art now, we're looking at possibly changing that. Also, Latin this year, she showed up to her first day of school in person to a virtual class, and we were not notified that this was going to be a virtual class. I gave it a couple of days, and I said, maybe the teacher's on quarantine, totally qua, nope, teacher's going to be virtual the entire semester because he is being shared with another school. Now, he will be in person with our child's school, and the other students will be virtual. So she has not met this teacher, she has not had a consecutive monitor in that classroom. There have been issues of honesty and academic standards in the classroom that have to have, that we've had to change the way our child learns in that classroom because students there were not being honest in their coursework, because the monitor was not there every day to know what's going on. So there are a lot of, of issues. When my child signs up for a class, we want it to be the same class throughout, we want it to be the same class that's available. And I just, I worry that we are not ready to offer all of these, as much as she loves them. And we have to look at what we can do via COVID, and what we can't, and what courses might be better to hold back and better to offer. Because she worked really hard with her partner to do everything for the service project, and then literally was not allowed to do it.
Well, certainly COVID prevented us from doing a lot of the things that we wanted to do. And you've mentioned some issues with communication and staffing, and the communication we can certainly work on, and staffing, God knows, we're trying to work on that as best we can. So I'm heartened to know that there were some of the elective classes that your daughter enjoyed. And, you know, the, the thing with an elective class is that students are going to enjoy some, and they're not going to enjoy the others. But the key for middle school, anyway, is that they have that opportunity to investigate and explore. And that's, that's one of the key components of a middle school program. At any rate, this is, this is about the program of studies. And so if you haven't already taken a look at the program of studies and the courses in it, I would encourage you to do so before our next meeting, so that you can vote on that. I would, would add, there is a bit of a timeline. We're already a month behind what we, what we would have been. And of course, that, that sort of puts things backward. Fortunately, we're not due to have our sixth grade orientation until the beginning of March, but any further delays would, would cause that to be pushed back so that rising sixth graders couldn't enroll, and of course, the counselors. So it, you can see that there is a time constraint, that's, that's important to keep in mind here. But I, I would absolutely love to schedule a time to meet.
Okay, Ms. Guy, and then we'll go to Dr. Warner and Dr. Chase.
I'm just wanting to understand why we're a month behind. And then also, Susan, if you wouldn't mind calling me again and explaining to me all those questions that you have, because my-
I took notes, so I can, I can give, no.
I just want to know, because my kids have graduated and they're adults, and then I have a little one, so I haven't dealt with this new program.
So to say a month behind is an exaggeration. This should have, should have come in December, it didn't come in December. So it's not really a month, though, because we have the winter break in between. So that's an exaggeration on my part.
Dr. Warner?
My concern is just a staffing issue. If we don't have the teachers for these electives, it's really tough for us to offer them to students. About what percentage of those electives are we still seeking candidates for?
So to go back to Ms. Randall's point, so many of our electives were designed so that our math and, and English teachers could teach those electives. So it's not so much of an issue of teachers not being able to teach the course due to certification issues, though that certainly is a concern, that, that is a concern to some extent, but it's really a lack of teachers, period. And as you know, we have a staffing shortage in our, all of our middle schools currently, where we're filling in with long-term subs, and that's in every single middle school.
Dr. Chase?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that we had problems having teachers before we switched to this schedule, because my middle schoolers had, had those issues. So I don't think the program of studies and this particular schedule is, I think what Dr. Greider said about it really being a staffing issue. And so I want to reiterate my invitation to teachers from other parts of the area to please look at Stafford County as a possible employer, because clearly, we have positions open. Thank you.
Dr. Taylor?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. There's a tremendous amount of interest in our middle school program, thank you. We're delighted by this, and it, and it seems to me, Madam Chair, that, that staff should prepare a presentation on our middle school schedule and to discuss the middle school at a potential work session coming up, because it's not just one or two board members. It seems like there's engagement from the board in, in corporate. So if that, if that pleases the board, we could schedule that at a later work session and kind of separate the, maybe the schedule from the program of studies, per se, to, to bring a little bit more light to, to some of these questions, because I certainly would love to, to learn a little bit more and, and get some answers to these questions myself.
Would, would the board be interested in a work session before the next meeting? If we did it on the same evening, or, it's usually easier to schedule than if, if you can make the time than-
I would.
Sitting another night?
I would.
Okay. All right. And, and I suggest that, I know Dr. Greider probably took good notes.
Oh, that's right.
We're already oriented. All right, well, well, perhaps, hmm, we'll have Ms. Hall do some-
Magic.
Magic. But, 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 but let's, let's, let's do this, let's address questions-
Budget work session Saturday?
Oh, yeah. But that's, is that after our meeting? See, what we'd like to do is be sure we're in a position to at least address the program of studies. The staffing issues are, are something that are, are, you know, more-
Yeah.
Broad-
Right.
Than with the program of studies.
I think, I think-
We do need to have a, a meeting on that.
I, I think some board members were here when the change was made, so I don't know that all board members need to attend this, because I was, you know, I was part of the board when we passed this change.
I'm just curious, too, you know, data-wise, like, is there any, I, I don't know. I, I mean, and I know it's so blurry.
So, no, not anything-
Officially, no.
Not anything that you can really-
Concretely, yeah, yeah.
And, you know, research would say that if you're implementing any significant change, you're going to have to have an implementation period of at least three years before you get accurate data, feedback from it, so.
Can I just ask, do, off the top of your head, do you have the number of vacancies in the middle schools that we have right now? Like, what, what is the burden?
I can, I can give you a ballpark, but I'm not exactly sure.
Why don't we ask Dr. Taylor to get us that for, you know, he can send that to us, because then he can get it from, be accurate.
Yep.
Because we, it, it might even be helpful to break it down by school.
Yeah, I think it's in the 40s, 50s, ballpark.
And then class sizes, like, what are we looking at, our average English math classes? You don't have to do it again.
Oh, please.
Yeah, it's just something to consider.
That's fine. I always like to get accurate information, and I, well, I appreciate your willingness to pull that number out. I, I think, I'd, I'd rather have it closer in the field than in the ballpark. So if we can, ask Dr. Taylor to supply that. But the, the question is, what do we need to address approving a program of studies for the coming school year? Because we need to do that, we, we can make, certainly, if the board wants to make changes, we can make those changes, but we need to know what questions we need answered to, to do that at the next meeting, or else we are going to put our families and our students at a disadvantage if we don't have that study. So, Dr. Warner?
Ms. Healy, I was just going to recommend, I think there's a few of us that are comfortable with the program of study, but I think there are, the questions that we're asking are outside that. So I, I think I can, I personally can support the program of study, but I can understand that we do need additional information. I think that we should maybe separate those two things. I, I think what they're recommending as a program of study is good, and I can support that, and I think many of us can. And I think that there is some, but I think there are additional questions, and I think that it would maybe be best if those questions were answered in separate meetings with those school board members that are of interest. So that can be done before the next meeting, when we have to vote on this.
Although, I, I always like to share. So if school board members have specific questions about the program of studies, if, if you can, if you know what those questions are, because if you have the meeting, there are going to be new questions that arise, I, I would ask that we send them to Dr. Taylor, and that the response be shared with everyone, so we all, you know, are on the same page with that information. But the, it sounds like the, the staffing is another issue, and I would be very surprised if that was limited to the middle schools. I, I know in the high schools, and, and, you know, to a certain extent, the elementary schools with, with the specials, I mean, is staffing is, is continuing challenge, but it's an issue that, that is important. And with this interest, this is exciting that we all have this same, you know, interest.
I do want to add one more thing. There was a report we were supposed to get in December, December 15th, I think. It was the achievement report, based on, on the data, it was a draft report, and none of us have received that. It might be helpful if we had that data, too, so we could see what our student achievement levels are, especially in the middle school, before we make any of these decisions.
Okay, well, but right now, let's focus on, two weeks from now, dealing with the program of studies and what we're going to put forth for our parents and students to review in determining what course they will, would like to have. I, I know last round, I was very concerned. We were offering these fantastic sounding courses in our catalog, but there wasn't anything that said, "But, if we don't have anybody to teach it."
There is, actually.
Well, I know, there's a footnote.
Their caveats are up.
That's, that, that's mine. It's like, this isn't fair to tell people, we have this wonderful program-
Agreed.
That's my concern.
It's contingent on, on the, on the, you know, having the staff, yes, thank you. I, I was the footnote queen when that came, when, when that came out. No, I, I tell you, I was, well, maybe the, the high school, the high school, for, for all of that. But, but it's, it sounds like, we'll, we'll deal with the program of studies at the next meeting. So if anyone has any questions, get them to Dr. Taylor. Boy, you're going to be inundated with these questions, but that's good, because you can get, get the answers. You can separate the questions into the program of studies, what you need to deal with the agenda item, and then others, other middle school-related issues that you might have. If you want to, to start thinking about that, then, then we can have a, a completely separate work session I just dedicated to, to the middle school. And that, that would be great, because sometimes middle school gets collapsed in the, in the middle there.
And it's so important.
It is exciting to have this interest.
Yes, I agree with you, 100%. So thank you all.
Thank you.
And I'd like to thank Dr. Strike and her team for being available tonight for questions, so.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Dr. Greider. All right. So the last thing we have is item 12.04, Adoption of Revisions to Policy 1108, School Board Meetings, as Dr. Warner pointed out in their earlier item when we approved a calendar. This is a proposal for a change in the, the school board meetings. So I don't know if you want to discuss it tonight, we can certainly, you know, have any continuing discussions, you know, at the retreat, because this, this is a proposal on changing the way we do business. And if we can focus on how can we most efficiently and effectively do business, then, you know, that, that's, that's where we need to go.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Ms. Randall?
I just also wanted to say this for new board member benefit, that because, and Lisa, please correct me, or Ms. Butright, please correct me if I'm wrong. This has to come before the board two times, before we actually have it as an action item. So it's a little different than what we normally do. So I'm just pointing that out for new board members.
That's our policy. The policies have to come twice.
I, I just have a quick question. So, I mean, looking at this, this is, we're looking, this is going to help us streamline and sort of make the meeting timeframes a little bit more efficient, maybe hopefully increase, increase community part, because I know a lot of people can only come for so long, and they're waiting for certain specific items to be addressed, but because the meeting goes so long, and then they need to get home and do stuff. So we're looking at this from the perspective of streamlining and, or cutting down the number of, like, what's the perspective I'm looking at this from?
Well, I'll let Dr. Taylor address this.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This actually provides the board a couple of opportunities. The first one, of course, is for the board to just look at how you operate in general. It's no mystery to, to anyone, the amount of sacrifice that board members have to make of their time. It is a volunteer job, it's not a salaried position that you assume, being a board member. And the real work of the board happens, not necessarily at the school board meetings, but in committee work, in work sessions, in conversations, and in doing the fact-finding that we just discussed, related to the middle school item and several of the other items. Having time for the board to hear an item, have the public respond to that item for four weeks before the board has an opportunity to vote on that item, presents the board an opportunity to hear from its constituents en masse. It also presents the board an opportunity to let an idea ruminate, and, and to gather more facts, and to have questions answered in, in a fashion where you're not hemmed up against a deadline that's just a few days away. As it stands right now, the deadline for board materials for the next school board meeting is the end of this week. So we, we are certainly backed up against a schedule every time that the board has a two-week schedule. Now, during budget season, that makes an awful lot of sense, because there's a lot of, of conversation that the board wants to have around its budget, because it's one of the most significant decisions that the board makes. But regular scheduled meetings, having the staff disciplined to bring something to the board several months in advance before it's due, it's really important. And so that the board can consider it with, with its, its deliberate conscience and, and be able to make the decision that's in the best interest of the community after having that time to deliberate on it. And that's, so that's why we're bringing this for your consideration. A little bit different format, but hopefully something that'll be a little bit more efficient as well.
Dr. Chase?
Yeah, so I, I just didn't know whether new board members were available at 4:30 as opposed to 7:00, so I don't know whether that's, that's the case. I'm a little concerned about board meetings going from, say, 4:30 until 9:30 or 10:00. That's a pretty long board meeting, and then we wouldn't have another board meeting. So, you know, I, it's an interesting thing to sort of think about, discuss. You know, would it make sense to have one board meeting a month that's where we do action items and information items and things like that, and then another board meeting where it's more of a work session and, and getting comments from the public or something like that? I'm just, I'm just, just throwing that out there, so.
If I could just make a comment, we actually had that schedule at one point, when one of our superintendents, who came in from another state, proposed it. And it started out great. I mean, our information items, we, you know, we spent time on, and then the board meeting, the business meeting, was pretty quick, because we were just, you know, basically taking action. However, it, over time, it eroded, and there came to be more action on the information days and information. It, it just, it didn't work out. Now, you know, it's probably a combination of the, the, the needs of the division and, and the board, but it's certainly something we could, we could consider, and that, that would be a good thing to talk about, you know, on a retreat. This is going to be important, because this is how we're going to do business. And, and if we can streamline it, great. I do know, you know, having worked with previous superintendents, that it's, it's very challenging for the superintendent and the staff to have everything ready for the meeting, and then turn around and have to do it all again. And that's one reason why sometimes things would come to the board that were incomplete, or we'd have an agenda published, and it wasn't there, because they're still working on it to get it over the weekend, and that doesn't serve us, and it doesn't serve the public. You know, is, we, we need to, we need to have a situation where we have all of the information that we need to make a decision, and all the information our constituents need to be able to, you know, communicate with us their, their thoughts on it as well. So, you know, this, this is, this is a proposal, it's, it's up to the board. I think you who have worked with me before know I'm all about streamlining. Any comments, any other, for now, we, we certainly will have more discussion about this. Is this on the agenda for the retreat?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay, so that'll, that'll be a good chance to, to talk about it. Because as Ms. Randall pointed out, this is- Um, because as Ms. Randall pointed out, this is not going to come back for action at the next meeting. This will come back for information again. But we ought to take advantage because by the time we get to the next meeting and that budget starts, we're going to be quite busy with, with budget items. Okay, that is the last item on our information. We have, darn, no staff reports tonight. Sure everyone's disappointed. Um, the announcements, next board meeting is January 25th and the, uh, the budget town halls will be starting the end of January. How are we posting those, those dates, Dr. Taylor?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Uh, we'll be advertising, uh, these to our public through, uh, all of our outlets, uh, whether they be through our auto-call system, our email system, as well as on our website. We'll be sharing this with our media outlets as well. This is something new. I am so delighted, uh, that the board has, uh, agreed to engage with our public in a face-to-face environment at some of our school sites. Um, as our public can see in the agenda, we'll be visiting each magisterial district, each election district, um, and hoping to engage with our citizens about, uh, our budget proposal and, uh, give valuable feedback to our school board members as they consider, uh, our budget proposal this year. So thank you so much for your participation and we look forward to seeing you out there.
And any board member is, of course, free to go to any of these meetings, um, whether they're in your district or, or elsewhere, depending on your schedule and, um, you know, your, your availability to go, as well as the public. Um, even though they're being held in each of the, um, election districts, you're free to go to, you know, any one or more, you know, of the meetings wherever they're being held. So thank you very much and we'll see you, uh, next week. I get to do this. We're done. Yay.